Good evening. Hello, I'm here.
I'm here.
Mine says budget screen when it comes in.
I think the other's Emily. Alright, and I, okay, I thought I admitted speaking, but apparently I admitted. The other Halifax.
So you let me in. Please close out browser, browser to microphone, that's good.
Yeah.
Seems warmer. Did you hear that they fixed it?
No, well, I asked the kids and they said that it was a little warmer. Oh, but I, you know, I put on too much.
Better to have some layers.
Right.
My fingers are cold. Well, we've got little heaters I could have brought in.
Oh, no, 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 we're good. Got enough clothes on here to sink a ship. Okay.
I got extra kind of gloves if you need to put on. At best, at worst.
Ding ding. How you feeling?
Good.
Good.
Just wearing this because I don't want your mom to get mad at me. Oh, she's done.
Good, he's, she's had every shot known the man, but.
Hey, I got a COVID shot and then, you know, I got it, but it was really, you know, couldn't have been wild there, like it was nothing.
Yeah, so she said everyone.
Yeah, me too.
I, you have?
Oh, yeah, well, I had it so bad that I like, I was in the cardiologist forever. And my heart rate is like, be sitting here, it'd be forty eight, my heart rate. And then I sort of stand up or just turn around and it would go to one sixty. So it was really crazy. I didn't like that one bit.
It's not good.
No, I didn't like that one bit, so. I think if I just get the shot.
Yeah.
And then not worry about it. But.
I think I got one, but I, I said, no, I'm not getting another one.
Yeah.
I think it brings out.
People in my fam- my family are doing different things, right? So.
Oh, yeah, so I got the, I got this.
What is that?
Look, look at you.
Yeah, don't ask me how to run it, but.
It's very pretty.
Oh, thanks. The kid, the kids did that. Oh, 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 yeah, well, I don't think so. I even took a class down to college.
Did you?
For the terminally terrified.
Okay, well.
And guess what happened? I messed up. I messed up the thing so bad, the instructor said, I don't know what you did. He couldn't fix it.
And now what?
I just keep punching buttons, something will happen.
Let me see.
Alright guys, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting.
Is this an Apple thing or does this is something you made up yourself? What do you want to do with this?
Okay, so where do you want to go?
Um, I want to go to my emails, where are they? So that you have seventy seven. Yeah, seventy seven. I'm gonna send you another one, you'll be up at seventy eight.
So right here?
Yeah, so do you start?
Reporting started.
Recording has started, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, what do I?
Were you looking for the agenda?
Yeah. I said, oh, God, you're warm.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order at six oh one P M. This is a special meeting of the Halifax Select Ward on January tenth, twenty twenty five. And we have an agenda. Um, focused on budgeting primarily, but also on other aspects of the town report and town meeting and writing the town meeting. Uh, warning articles. And I understand that there might be some changes and additions to this agenda.
I have a couple of very small, quick ones and you guys will let me know. I think they're gonna all be old business. Uh, the first is I want to talk about ED getting you to sign or assuming we're all ready to move forward. Um, I've been asked by John Deere to get the purchase agreement signed.
Okay.
The one caveat to that, and I'm sure we'll do it as we're talking, is the warranty.
Okay.
We can talk about that at the time. Um, also, ED, I need you to sign the arbitration agreement for the truck. Uh, remember, we had that corrected because M and T got the wrong date. Um, I did talk to Fisher. Fisher signed his new opinion and sent it in today.
Okay.
So now that he's done that, you're good to go. Um, I can give you, since I talked to Bob, an update on the easement, because that's gonna be interesting, perhaps school. And then also an update on the audit, because that might have something. You might want to think about that as we're looking at budget. Because I had a conversation with Bonnie yesterday and I'm having a conversation with Bonnie at nine AM on Monday.
Okay.
Bonnie again, forget.
Uh, Batch Elder, the municipal audit, yeah.
Any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, let's go ahead and get started then. Um, so I am going to suggest. Uh, that we actually start with these, um, signatures.
Okay, so the first signature, do you know if it's in still in there? You had it once upon a time, so. That would be great. And then if you just give it to me, I'll send it in. I'll get a PDF and send them. That's that one.
A arbitrage and tax certificate. Which I already signed once.
Can I just look at it very quickly and make sure it's got the right date? It's been adopted on October one, that's it. Um, this is the purchase agreement that I got from Bill yesterday for John Deere. Um, he has not, we need to, the reason we need to sign this, I sent in an intent to buy the day, you know, the day after we opened the bids. He'd like this purchase agreement signed because he needs it to put on the snow tires that we asked for.
Okay.
So there's no amount in here for the snow tires, it's the one ninety four two. It's got the trade-in allowance of forty thousand, one fifty four, two hundred. Right now, it's got that you've declined the warranty. I went back to him and said, no, we have not declined the warranty. We're talking about the extended and can you please? Explain to me what the difference is between comprehensive and powertrain? And I, he got back to me right before the meeting and it was clear as mud to me. So let me read what he said. And then we can decide at that point what. So he said, the machine comes with a twelve month warranty. Beyond that time is considered extended warranty, which we understand. The comprehensive coverage, and that was the one. Uh, six, whatever it was, uh, sixty months and six thousand hours. Uh, he says that covers all the major components of the machine. Radio and A C components, for example. Powertrain and hydraulics covers the motor, transmission, drivetrain components and major hydraulic components. Then he says, please be aware, travel times, road service is not included in the extended warranties. Then this is, this is very helpful, and I did talk to Mike about it this morning. This is the town's current loader averaged roughly six hundred hours per year. Which is the reason that he originally quoted the sixty month, three thousand hour warranty. He does not think we need six thousand hours. He thinks that's way too much.
Yeah.
So in talking to. In talking to both Bill. And Mike, and let me pull this. For instance, on the comprehensive, and we'll go back and forth, on the comprehensive, remember it was six thousand. Hours and it was ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, we're kind of between these two, since the difference is so small. We thought instead of ten thousand dollars, it should be, you know, five thousand, six hundred. We could do that. But it depends on, and we still want sixty month, so it's really between those two. So our loader right now. Our loader right now, hold on, has.
Eight thousand.
Where's the loader? Come here, loader. The loader has, yeah, eight thousand, seven thousand, nine oh nine, and it's a two thousand nine. So that's sort of the first thing, so we have to decide on hours, which I thought that was, that was helpful advice. But then I went back and I said, well, it seems like. Thinking about ten thousand dollars versus six thousand and ten thousand dollars versus, it's the powertrain and hydraulics. Which was, you know, between ten thousand and six thousand in that case, I was like, well, that seems awful expensive for radios and air conditioning. And is powertrain, but he didn't actually say that powertrain and hydraulics were included. So I went back and asked him that question. I said, sorry to, you know, do them.
I mean, my guess is that you had the powertrain, powertrain and hydraulics and then comprehensive and it's.
It should have all of those.
It, it should include everything below.
The way he wrote it, it just didn't say that.
Yeah, and the other question I guess I would have is, you know, radios and A C, that's great, but what about like other electronic stuff like computer systems and.
Okay.
You know, wiring, stuff like that.
Okay.
Because obviously that's.
Sure.
Anybody that has a car today or a vehicle that has.
Computer systems, right, sensors.
That bothers.
Yep, computer systems, sensors.
Right.
Okay. So I'll ask them, alright, but he did not get me. Get that, so anyway, I won't have that. I may get back to me tomorrow, but it may not be until Monday.
And so, did you say like six hundred hours a year is what we?
He, yeah, that's what he said, yeah.
So five years, times success, three thousand hours.
Um, so he said. Six hundred hours.
Yeah, five, yeah, five years, six years would be thirty six hundred hours. So. You know, the, the warranty. Ends at, uh. The six years anyway. No matter what the hours are, or sixty months, sorry, five years, right?
Yep.
Um. So. It doesn't really make sense to do more hours than that, I mean.
So, so in his, so that what you're saying, well, that it's between, whatever it is. Is between three thousand and four thousand hours.
Correct. I mean, we're gonna run out of time before we run out of hours, I think, on that schedule. Does that make sense?
So five years, yes, so five. Six hundred times is, yeah, three thousand. Okay.
Does that make sense, Edmer?
Yes, um. So before we sign this purchase order, we want to choose a plan.
Well, I, why don't you go ahead and sign the purchase order? I will then talk to him, and if you guys authorize me to add the warranty information. Dollars, then I'll just add it and do the arithmetic on there initially.
Okay.
So the question, but what I still don't know, we still, I still have to ask, ask the question is.
If those things are covered.
Yeah, Randy's, Randy's question, because it's not obvious. So if you just sign it and then. We're talking three thousand, it would be four thousand, two sixty two.
Four thousand.
Because we had, we did eight thousand hours. On it, but you're right, this is five years and we're gonna run out of it. Yep.
So it's, it's between forty two sixty two and. Um, on the, if we just went powertrain and hydraulics, it would be thirty two, that would be.
That's.
No, sorry, three thousand hours and that's twenty six seven.
And twenty six seventy two.
Okay.
Both at three thousand hours. So it's forty two sixty two. Versus.
Talking makes more sense to go with the comprehensive, it just would be nice to know what it covers.
He needs understanding, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the difference between the two is, you know, a thousand dollars on that big machine.
Okay, uh, and the reason that I was asking that is because I think some comment about the bank wanting to see the purchase order.
Well, that's the next thing. As soon as we have it, then I'm gonna send it to the bank.
Okay.
Um, so we have to, we really want to move that, move that forward.
So, um, what I will do is, um, I will make a motion that we authorize Karen Christopherson. Uh, to follow up on the details of what the comprehensive plan includes for. Uh, the power guard protection plan and go with as a first choice, the three thousand hours, sixty months. Comprehensive plan and as a second choice, go with the three thousand hours, sixty months. Uh, powertrain and hydraulics plan. Do you have a second? Okay, and any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero.
So if you sign that, let me have that and I'll stick it in the listy folder.
Um, you didn't send me the purchase order over here yet, did you?
Said I not sent it to you.
No.
I handed it to you. Do you have it? Oh, is it right under there? Is that it?
This is the. I have not seen.
So right there, is it underneath? There it is.
There it is.
And your signature's on the second page, I believe, so he should be able to send me the first page.
Just in a review.
Yes.
And we don't have a problem with it saying the type of sale is cash at this point?
Um, I will walk into all of that, because it's. I honestly don't know if we have the cash. Did we talk about giving him cash for it or no? And then we're getting it financed on the backend?
It says type of sale, cash, lease or time sale.
I know, but what did we say? We were good to, did Patty say we had the cash to buy that now?
Not as far as I'm aware.
Okay. I'll ask Patty on Monday, I will find out. Because that's sort of within the ninety days and it's unlikely they'll have the bank financing by then.
Which is a problem, because it should have been, it should have been.
Well, Patty's been trying to get ahold of the bank and they have been.
Yeah, I know.
Like, completely elusive.
Okay, purchase their first, first signer. Okay, and I'm not gonna initial this standard warranty stuff, because it.
No, because I'm gonna fill that in, right, so that.
Okay, so that was our two signing things.
And did you give me the arbitration?
Yes, I'm gonna be good. I'm trying not to keep anything over here, because I know what happens. I'm a blat hole right now. Everything ends up in some file, I don't know later. Okay, um. Okay, let's now go into, um. The audit, because you said that had budget implications.
So I spoke with Bonnie and. I will, I can read for you the email that she sent.
And what's that called again? Something audit, a?
Uh, that's our municipal audit. And let me read it to you. So we have had audits, just for background. Um, Batch Elder did our audit for fiscal twenty two. We have an article of the town said, I'm gonna do every three years, so the current audit is twenty three, twenty four and twenty five. For the years ended June, twenty three, twenty four, we have three years of to go back.
I thought we were just doing it every third year.
But you have to do the, you, you can't, because whether you do the full audit, and this is what I'll review, you can't just do the third year and have all kinds of mayhem in the prior years, because. They have to be able to track year to year to year to year, that you could never just randomly do a year. You have to close out the books. So balance sheets need to balance, you need to, if there's.
Like when we didn't do one for six years, what, they only did one year prior, that's what I'm asking.
I'll find out on Monday, when I, when I talk to her, but let me, let me read you this first. Where she said. And this, I got this, uh, Thursday morning, I'd be happy to speak with you. Doing a three-year audit is very difficult and does not save the town much money. In order to do an audit for June thirty twenty five. We need to go back and verify the carryforward balances are correct for fund balances, capital assets, debt service and retirement. We would need to gain a comfort level that all activity in that period is reasonable and fairly stated. Basically, we would need to gain a comfort level that all the activity is fairly stated and we can rely on. Activity from July one twenty two through June thirty twenty five. This is not an easy task. Standards have changed tremendously in the last few years, requiring increased oversight. Client levels of skills, knowledge and experience, among other items. As I recall, you use QuickBooks, which was a strong recommendation to move to Nemrick. QuickBooks use adds an additional layer of, as it is not fund-based, which we know. I would be happy to discuss with you, but feel it is important to identify areas of difficulty. I met a client today and tomorrow, but can speak on Monday if that works for you. So that's kind of where, that's, that's where we are. If, if you only find out how, if it was just one year prior. Um, but for every year that's prior, you have to verify that your starting point, right? So doing three, I mean. I am not, I never have been, I'm, I'm a fan of. Things, businesses, towns should be audited every year. This, I'm gonna find out from her, one of the big things I want to find out is, okay. This is where we are. What's it gonna cost? What's the minimum amount of work that we need to do? What kind of prep work do we need to do? I'm gonna talk to her about Nemrick. I had a whole other conversation with Patty today. Because we're gonna need to frontload a lot of work to be able to transition into Nemrick. The multiple years, we're gonna have to transition from QuickBooks to Nemrick, so that then. Bonnie can use the Nemrick system as the basis for the audit, so this is gonna be a. Sort of multi-step, um, there's gonna be a lot of work involved between kind of now. Uh, and when she wants to start doing this. Now. If we have to do work for prior to when the fiscal twenty five ends. Clearly, she can't do twenty five until twenty five ends, so that's one thing, but she may be able to help us get some work done. In the, for whatever the pre-work that she has to do and what she needs to verify to get her comfort level due to twenty five audit. So that's kind of where I am, and I'll talk to her Monday morning and find out what, uh. What she has to say. So what is our number based on budget? And ED, I'm gonna. I'm gonna forward this to you.
It, I was already copied on it, I think, because she copied people, so.
Oh, yes, you're on there. Yes, you're on there, okay, you're on there.
Um. But I, I think, I, I guess here's my. Here's my opinion and perspective. The townspeople voted to have an audit done every third year.
Yep.
And that is the expectation that we've been budgeting for is that we would be doing an audit of F Y twenty five. We've gathered in that reserve fund, what, we think ten thousand dollars so far, and we put in to, to put eight this year, we put more in.
Yeah, let's have a look.
Current year. So I'm just worried. That this is gonna end up costing a lot more than, than the taxpayers expected. And that, than what they. Required us to do, right? They, they were the ones who said, every three years, we want a formal. Auditing firm to do an audit of the town.
And, and I, that, that was before I kind of was around, um, and so. I wasn't part of any of the explanation or.
I, I don't know, I don't even know if that was that article, a petitioned article that was put on by the citizens?
It must have been.
I think so.
Yeah, it was.
So.
Yeah, that's when it was going through that. Somebody didn't ask the question, to say, what did that mean?
It was a lot of, uh.
Like, when I looked at it, just as a business person, I'm like, okay, well, that means it's gonna be three ti- three audits that we're doing all at once. That is the first thing that jumped in my head when I saw it.
Not how, that's not how somebody who doesn't deal with finance understands it, because I, you know, my dealing with it, and I, again, had no part in. How this got on the article, and I don't remember how I voted frankly on it, right? But the point is that this little town has, has had town auditors doing things. We have done formal audits. When it was required by the, um. FEMA funding that we have, like, something called the single audit, I think.
What's, what's the single?
I don't know, it was a single audit that was done after Irene. And that, and then we didn't have anything happen until this article went on and we did the twenty, they did twenty one. Did twenty.
She did, she did.
Went back and did twenty, when she, twenty one, and then she did twenty two, so I think that there was an expectation. That, you know. We would just like, every three years, take a look and see what's happening at a, at a deeper level. So.
Well, let's find out what the rules are, and then we'll, I guess, have to back into what we're, we can do and, you know, we can only do.
I mean.
Have to do what we.
Right.
Have to do.
But, right, but there's that, so I'll also say that I just have a little bit of a bias that. What is the taxpayer getting from the audit? Are they supposed to be getting a level of trust in our finances? Because I, I, as a person who has a master's degree, I'm not a finance person. When I got the report, in both times that I looked at, at these audits, I didn't have a clue what I was supposed to be doing with that information as a member of this board. Right, it's like, thanks, you know, sounds like we need some software this last time, but the rest of it was very hard for me to interpret. And understand how to do this stuff better. So that's my concern with, you know, whether it's eighteen thousand dollars or it becomes twenty five or thirty thousand dollars. I'm just like, what, what are we getting from this, right? We are gonna get. A better ability to borrow money at a low rate. Presumably, right? But.
I think the comfort level, because the concern with town finances, as I'm learning more and more, and. You know, we can talk to V L C T and they will say the same thing, and. Early on, I sat in on one of the V L C T classes and fraud is a real fear. And municipal finance, just by its nature, and we happen to be a teeny, teeny town versus a big city. You have to deal with the same things, and so there are various funds that are used for different things, and so there's a bunch of different scheduling. So there's a level of complexity that you just have to. Go through, it's sort of like there's a very strange financial statement if you're an electric utility, right? If you look at an electric utility, you're like, holy cow, what does this mean? It's just something that you have to do if you're an electric utility, or it's the kind of financial statement you have to do if you're an insurance company. They're all different from. Businesses, you know, that any of us would, would have any familiarity with. A town municipal financial statement is kind of like that, it's just peculiar to the organization. So I think your question is the right one, ED, which is. Do we have to do multiple years? What do we have to do to create the comfort level? What is that gonna cost? If the town wants us to only do as little as possible every three years. How does that play into what, because she said rules have changed, so how does that play into the rules? What are the rules? And how do we get a look at them? So that's most I can do on Monday.
Yeah, I remember that one, that went, that one, that thing went through, they had it on the thing there. To vote on it. I think the people wanted to know where the money was going, that's what, that was big.
Right, which I think is, is fair, and, and it is, it is a, it is a. Very detailed, nitpicky audit, which in my mind, you want, right?
I, I'm not, yeah, I mean.
But I remember that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't think we shouldn't do this. I guess the question in my mind is, based on what the voters said. You know, like, I don't wanna keep extending it and saying, well, now we have to do it every year. If.
Well, she hasn't told me that.
Agreed.
That is my bias, because I think explains not.
And I will say that it was my interpretation of her earlier comments working with us, that like, oh, you know, you guys are, you know. And, and I don't, you know. I just, I just want. I wanna have usable information back from this, and, and a lot of this, you know, like, to say I've got a level of comfort is, is great. But I wanna also, like, figure out how do we make it easier for the voters to believe that money is being put where it's supposed to be.
Well, but that's why you have all these different funds, that's to have all. Well, but that's why you have all these different funds, that's to have all these different, that's the whole point, right? And that's why it's so complicated that you have to be a municipal accountant to understand how it's working. So that's gonna make it any easier, right? It's gonna look exactly like the twenty-twenty-two audit. It's gonna look exactly like that.
But, but like, and this is, you know, I think Bonnie did give us, you know, like at some point, I'm like, can you just tell me, like, I don't, you know, all of the legalese that they have to say, like, I'm not really saying this, but I'm sort of saying it.
Yeah, there's a lot of boilerplate.
Tell me, do we have more debt than we should as a town? Yes or no? Is it, do we have a, a reasonable amount of debt? Uh, you know, average amount of debt? Or are we like in debt higher than we should be? Those are the kinds of questions that I, that, that.
So, so that's called debt capacity. So we can ask Bonnie about how do we calculate debt capacity?
And, and I will say VLCT's financial people also have, you know, can give us some of those guidelines too, right? So they can help us understand.
Okay.
Anyway, so we are gonna talk more about audit, but we don't have any changes to the budget.
No, not, no, no, not till I've gotten back to you after I chat with her.
So audit is moving forward. I think one other thing I would like to state is that we are going with the provider we went with last time because
because all of the background work and all of the work papers, she's the only one that has. And any other auditor where we can put it out for bid, we don't have a whole lot of time. But if we put it out for bid, then they would, God knows where they would have to start to, to get the information. So I think, you know, the the continuity from auditor to auditor actually means something. I think when you change up auditors a lot, that is a huge red flag. Anytime anyone changes an auditor, it's like, what, did they find something bad? And they don't wanna be a part of it, so I'm.
Or are they cheap like us? I'm really the cheapest one no matter what, right? Yeah, okay. All right, cool. All right, now, I'm gonna come back to the easement, make sure we do that later, but I wanna get into.
Yeah, that's not that urgent.
Yeah, okay, let's get into the budget itself. Um, so we don't have any other large equipment purchase details besides these conversations that we're not gonna go for the ten thousand dollar um, uh, warranty on this one piece of equipment. We haven't had, we haven't heard from M and T, anything that would give us a sense of here's a different loan rate that we are expecting.
No, and she was trying to get ahold of them this morning while I, while we were, while I was there. I was here from like ten to three.
All right. All right, then the next thing that it says is any other pencil sharpening. Um, I'll be honest with you, since we just met, what was it? Can you say? Um, I have not really taken a, another look at it, and I think it might prove us to walk through what we have again, since we're here.
So I can.
So you can quickly just line down through, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, maybe start at the bottom, li- you know, the, at the bottom level for people who haven't been involved before. Um, and just say, here's, here's what we're looking at right now, as we understand it for a uh, average increase. Um, and.
Do you want me to share my screen?
You would, yeah.
Um, what I can do before we start line iteming.
Yep.
Can I just show you what I spent time on today, which is getting the equipment schedules in front of us?
Yep.
So this way, as things change, as we get information from M and T, this is where it's gonna change, and then we'll see how it flows through. So let me do that. That. So for starters.
Yeah.
This is a two-part, and I don't know if you guys, you can, you guys can see that, right? All right, here, Rhonda, maybe you can look over here. So there's two sections. This top section from here to here are our trucks. Then if you scroll down here, this stuff is our, you know, tractors, and I'm recalling that equipment. The way this works and, and these, this particular tab does not go in the book, but this is the information that drives it to the parts that go in the book, right? This is our, this is our input section. So we've got our single, these are truck number two, four, three, and five. We've got the model year, the description, the purchase amount, the term, the fix rate, and the payment. If you go back here, we can open this up for prior years. We didn't have a whole, we got twenty-two and twenty-three. In prior years, that was back here, it showed this is what our interest and principal was, but we weren't keeping track in, independently, so we've kind of upped our game a little bit there. So now, the twenty-four, twenty-five, this goes all the way out to thirty. Okay? And we have principal for each year. We've got principal. Then we have interest. So we have our totals, and this is our total, and this is the number on this row nineteen for when we talk about what's our principal and interest for trucks. That's how, that's how that number shows up. So this stuff, which is related to existing financing information, that's how we get principal and interest. At the moment, for this new truck, right? This is the truck, the sixty-five hundred. That's the one we just financed through M and T. So these numbers here come right from the purchase agreement. Okay, this one forty-two is the total principal, and that's our total interest on the loan for that, for that vehicle. We've got five payments. So this is all, this is the existing fleet. So we're, we've got a loan out with Western Star. And I'm not sure who that's with. It didn't, I don't know if it's with M and T, it might be with M and T, but it's not part of the schedule that when we started this one, but these, this is the information that's out there now. And what we're paying financing charges on. This thing will be done this year. What is this one? Truck four, the single axle dump truck. We pay for twenty-four and twenty-five. I'm showing the prior year just cuz. And anyway, then we go, we stop paying that, and then the, this vehicle number two, I mean, and look at the interest rates. Look where they are.
And look where they were.
Yeah. And now they're, you know, closer to five, and this one was earlier when we got that, and that was six.
Jeez.
So that's the trucks. We've got the same thing going on with equipment. Now, interestingly, these two are being replaced, right? But, but we haven't traded them in yet. These are the two that we, we just, sorry. These are the two that we just opened the bits. These are the new ones.
They will be the replacements.
They will be the replacements. The next two, and we'll go back, and I'll show you on the equipment schedule, which is gonna be in the book. Next up are things like the grader and the tractor. Are the next kind of iteration of things. And we had already set, and as you can see, these are linked to the equipment schedule, the grader targeting twenty-six to replace, and the New Holland tractor targeting twenty-nine. Okay? So that's the finance schedule. When we go to print, and I've gotta do a little work here, but this is what we have. This is the schedule that we had in the book. It was the first time last year that we had this schedule in here. Look at this stuff, and it just gives a forward view.
Yeah, that's a good thing to put in.
And so I still have to get rid of column E here, because it's got the tractor. Last year, we didn't have the new grader, we didn't have the new excavator, so there was no reason to have an equipment schedule all by itself. So I combined it. So I'm gonna take it off of the what I'm calling the vehicle, which is trucks. And so what this does is it takes the same information that we just looked at land, you know, that was sort of vertically, and this is horizontally. So we've got twenty-three, twenty-four, and then this column J shows for that year, what is our principal and interest expense for our active flow? It's just, it's the same information, it's just presenting it this way. So that's.
I have a question. Um, I have two questions. One is, what did I do with my briefcase?
With your what?
You learned, you learned my briefcase. Yeah, that's my bad, thank you. What'd you do back there? Back here when I put my coat on the rabbit.
Okay.
Everybody make sure I'm wearing my coat when they. The, uh, so one question I have, this is kind of more for not, maybe not us, maybe the people who are sitting here. How much do you really care to see the interest in the principal split, split out, or do you just wanna know, like, how much we're spending on the vehicle? I mean, it's, it's useful to us, but it's not something we can control.
No, and, but, but I think in an environment where interest is swinging all over the place, and why are numbers going up? It's like, look at the interest rate. Okay? That, I think it's.
Well, this is not giving us the rate, this is giving us the dollar amount, which is, you know, again, maybe, maybe that's what people want. I just, I'm, I'm wondering, like, is it TMI for people?
No.
Well, I'm, I'm not asking us, I'm asking, I mean, we, we need it on the backend. But I'm asking people who are reading the report.
Yeah.
You, you, so you're gonna read that in the report? Well, that didn't really say. Putting words in your mouth.
The one with the interest, that one was important. Like, this setup is just repetitive of the last that you showed.
Right, because Karen links it all together, right?
And it doesn't show you the interest or anything, right?
Um, I can put the interest rate in here easily enough, if you think the interest rate, it's just a matter.
You wanted to show. Oh, actually, it is.
The interest rates up here.
Yeah, okay.
Two, four, two, five, six, five, four, nine, three.
It's, so it's just like redundant information, right?
The, it, it's the other way, the landscape way, i- is is there because it's driving the information. It's only this way. We don't show the other one, that's just for us for data entry, and this is what goes in the book. Nobody knows except us, because when we change things, because we're going year to year to year to year to year, so that we can see twenty years of data in one shot.
Yeah.
You know, ten years of data, four years of data.
The, um.
And it's, it's impossible to read in this format. So that's why I did it this way.
Yeah, cuz I, I mean, I was just thinking back to like the old schedule that we have.
Was awful.
Okay, no, it was incorrect. It wasn't awful. It was done with, with the idea that it would give people the information they needed about what we are going to buy when. Um, it, it, it sort of just was more consolidated. It was like one page, here's the pieces of equipment we have, here's how much we owe on them, here's how much, here's where, when they're gonna roll off. And the one thing I would say that this doesn't have, I mean, it's a, it's a finance schedule, but it doesn't actually have quite as much of that look forward stuff, because we actually have seven trucks. We have.
So that's, so that's why we have an equipment schedule.
Right, and so I guess that's what, I guess my comment is, is there a way to consolidate these two things together?
No.
Okay, let's move on then.
They do two very different things. One is what do we own? Right? What do we own? How much did it cost? When is our next replacement? How many hours do we have on it? Kind of that's operating information. And then we have what is our financing information? And that financing information is the backup to what we put in the budget.
Yeah.
Because we have an interest line and we have a principal line.
Okay, I, I just, I, like, trying to get people to look at, to read what we have.
I actually had a lot of people come back to me and say, wow, this is a lot of information. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm fine with that, as long as, as long as it's not, again, just perceived as um, repetitive or too much information for, for people to really absorb. So cool. Let's move on to um, well, I guess we're, uh, were you finished with showing us this piece?
Um, so, yeah, so, so what's gonna happen? I still have to fix, I have to get rid of, I have to delete this. It was taking me too long today, and I here long enough. This is the stuff that when we talked to Gina, that we're gonna start, once it's lined up and settled, that's what's gonna be PDFed, and I can PDF everything, and it'll go in the, in the book. Same thing for the equipment schedule. We've got cars, trucks. Whoops, up here, we've got the trucks. This we're showing is the trade-in in the spring. I've got, I'm finding out what the repair cost was on two of these vehicles, the tandem dump truck and the Western Star. We are, there, it's out of warranty. All vehicle repairs are now town-funded. During last year, the repair cost was X, right? I wanna start to be able to tell people, and this isn't just, oh, it was this big number because we had this weird situation where a tree fell on it, right? Now, this is like normal wear and tear, cuz it's out of warranty, because we're driving it into the ground. What is it costing? So I'll fi- I'll find out what that number is, and we'll let you guys know, but for the moment, that's the direction that I think we wanna, we wanna head. Not normal wear and tear, but extraordinary wear and tear, just because we're well beyond the warranty, and then, and the use of the life of the vehicle. So that's what we'll see with that stuff. And again, this is here because we're trading it in in the spring. It's there. We'll see what happens. Equipment schedule, same thing. These two are gonna go away, because they're gonna trade in to the two on the bottom. That's your existing. And the interesting thing with this is the Caterpillar excavator, we're holding for trade-in. We're getting thirty thousand dollars. We thought we might get forty this time last year. We're getting thirty. On the loader, we thought we might get thirty, and we're getting forty. So we ended up with our trade-in in the right ballpark for sort of different reasons, but that's where we ended up. So I thought that was interesting, uh, interesting information.
Okay.
All right, so that is that's that. Now, these two things, this is kind of what would we like? In a perfect world, this isn't in the budget, but this is the kind of thing that should be making the wear and tear on the machines, should make our roads better, should make some glass longer. This was on last year, it was, it's called the compactor, but Mike said it's really a roller compactor. You can get it used, depending on what you get, but that's what basically rolls the roads, keeps them hard, so you don't have to go through and grade them all the time. We're actually able to compact them down. And it's just another tool. If we ever have the funding to do it, that would be like a nice to have. Likewise, you'd have to purchase this new um, a ledge hammer, so that you don't, you put it on the excavator. So when we're ditching, and we're trying to do something, we're not beating the daylights out of machines. Now, I think the question here, and we'll keep talking about it, but it's new thirty-five, you know, can we rent that? And so we'll have to decide that. But these are just the sort of things, and we had them in the book last year, though there was a typo. We had them in the book, book last year of, you know, what, what can we do? Because our expenses and wear and tear on these machines is so big. So that's that's that. Okay?
All right, so let's look again at the bottom line to start. Kind of the let's zoom here. The big stuff that we don't have, we have estimates in, but those estimates could go up or down. Has to do with those two pieces of equipment that we're still trying to understand our financing options are, but we have placeholders in for buying the loader and buying the excavator. And we ended up at a five point oh five percent increase overall. Um, we did do a look through this stuff um, last Tuesday, was it Tuesday? Yes. Um, and we made some adjustments along the way. Some of those were additions, some of those were, um, I don't know, what did we reduce? Can't remember. I know, I know this number started off at about eight percent, eight point six or something.
You cut money out of, uh, paving.
Paving was the big, was the big change, game changer with that. Um, and we cut, we did that in two small, smaller pieces, as I recall, right? First, we started with cutting, cutting it back to three hundred thousand. And then we caught an additional twenty-five thousand out of it, if I recall. Um, and there's one thing that occurred to me subsequent to this discussion, because last time we were here, we added in a dollar amount for additional insurance, property and casualty coverage for the fire company.
Uh, and.
And what I realized is those, those costs are calendar year. And we just put in calendar year, so it's likely that that's a little bit under.
That Dennis delivered that today.
Okay.
So what does that say? Account sixty-six, ten? Dispatch, is that, is that what it says on there?
This is dispatching fees.
Yeah, sixty-six, ten?
Yeah.
So. So we had written in here. In yellow. Sixteen thousand four eighty-four, and then per the bill received, we knew it was coming seventeen thousand. Four seventy-four, and you're looking at that bill right there.
Okay, and this bill is due by four fifteen twenty twenty-five. So this is, this is money's going out the current fiscal year.
So our, I thought she said this was being paid in June.
Well.
Or July, I thought she told me.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the invoice itself.
Assessment, assessments due no later. Assessments doesn't say. Please no. This assessment here. You know what? I'm gonna ask Patty.
So. So. An estimate of what they think it's gonna be.
It also says twenty-five. It doesn't say twenty-five, twenty-four. It says, says twenty-five.
She she told me something different, so I'm calling. Elvis has left the building, he was out. Hey Patty. I'm at the meeting and I have a quick question about the dispatching fee invoice. So the amount seventeen thousand four seventy-four, that matches what we put in the note that we knew that the bill was coming. From team, here's the question, when do we pay this bill? It's cuz it says assessments are due no later than April fifteenth twenty twenty-five. Ho- hold on, let me cut, let me put you on the speaker, okay? Hold on.
This call is being recorded.
Yeah, it's being recorded.
Okay, so, um, yeah, that always happens, um. It's it's one of those cycles where this is how it's always been, and and unless we wanna have it paid. Twice in one year for one year to get kind of caught up on the fiscal, on the fiscal billing of this. Then that's the only way that it'll that we'll be able to get out of this, out of this chain loop. Um, but we always get the bill now, we hold on to it until the beginning of the next fiscal year. Like, we didn't pay the bill for twenty twenty-four until September. So. We'll end up paying this bill for twenty twenty-five sometime around. You know, when tax after taxes come in, like around July, August, September, and they never seem to have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you, that just clarifies what we have to put in the book and sort of, um, I was looking at it saying, wait, this will fall in its fiscal year, so. Alright, so it's one of those, we end up paying in arrears, so to speak.
So I'm changing, I'm changing this to seventeen four seven four. Cuz that is what you will spend.
And and they've never had a problem with it in the past.
Okay, is that for four and five up there in key? The the dispatch, is that what that's for?
Okay.
I'm gonna say.
And I just say, keep in mind that Dennis was here last time and he said he thought they needed to do some sort of a major upgrade. That would require more money in this space for.
You mean the OSHA upgrade?
No, this, no, this was for the communications and their like, you know, their ability to do dispatch was on old.
Okay.
Old equipment and old frequencies or something along that line, so he. Think he was just kind of giving us a heads up that that might not be. That there might be other assessments on top of that.
Oh, I see, okay. Okay. Alright, are we are we all set with Patty then?
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll stay close to my phone.
So the, hold on, so I'm just gonna do this, is invoice number one oh two six nine. So we pay that in August twenty-six? When do we pay this, August twenty-six?
August twenty-five.
No, twenty-five.
August twenty-five. Right, okay. So that can go back into. Okay.
Okay, um, so. So we we're budgeting what we actually expect to spend, so we don't have to put an adder on that, but like I said. That property and casualty insurance thing. Is going to go up mid-year and we don't know what it's going to go up to. This may be another instance where we just acknowledge that we're gonna over, we're gonna likely spend over that.
And I'm sorry, what account are you looking at for?
That that was.
I don't wanna. Lie around and make everyone blind, I think.
It was the, um. Sixty-eight fifty-four.
There we go, right here.
Yeah. So. With adding that additional, um. Basically, the ability to replace those machines, not just get twenty, thirty thousand dollars for them, and but they get totaled. That has increased already a hundred and six percent. But, um, I was realizing that it would only cover the first calendar year.
Gotcha.
Right, so. And and I I don't, it feels to me like we've always put these kind of. Exact numbers in here, um, I don't think we've ever said, oh, and we're gonna add two percent or whatever, um, but. I just realized like, oh, you know, again, might be a place that we have. An overage when we're in the budget process or in the budget year itself. Um. So I was thinking we should just again kind of walk through what's here and see if there are any other. Pieces to this that we think. Would be.
Should we start at the top in the middle down?
Yeah.
Alright, everybody close your eyes while I zoom up there. Okay.
So we changed a few of these away from yellow last time.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm kind of dropping down where things are. Red, so that, this is a calculated field. So I don't know that we have any flexibility to change that.
Isn't that something we're actually waiting for? Stuff still, information?
She calculated it, remember she went, she went yesterday and calculated, so it's not yellow anymore. Start putting things where we've got. So then, you know, add in legal notices, that's a small number. So this one. This is a. This is emergency supplies.
Yeah.
So this was DV fiber and have to, you know, so I guess reach out to Paul.
So.
Wasn't it said that Emily tried to reach out to him?
Yes, she did try to reach out to him, um, and she reached out to anybody who was supposed to submit budget information, so. This amount right now is calculated as. Um. Ten eighty plus forty-five hundred. Just trying to figure out what the forty-five hundred is for.
Hold on, we'll try to catch up here. That doesn't need to be yellow anymore, it's old, okay, so this. We had DV fiber. Not a hazard grant, so I don't know what that was. See what these.
That and that hazard hazard grant was like a one-time thing.
Mm-hmm. So. Let's see up at the top, so. Go here.
Oh, you know what that is? No, that's not his wages, right? That's that's up above.
No, his compensation's up here on row fifteen. Sorry, so let me come back now, so this is where we are, so this is. Twenty-four, twenty-five. And this is new budget twenty-six. Green is, green is what we spent.
Spent in, that's.
Like that thirteen was spent fiscal twenty-five so far. So we're already above budget, so let's see what that says, so. Oh, nine thousand two hundred of it was for the hazard grant. Looks like. Plus DV fiber, so what was DV fibers, nothing? Yeah, I mean, that's only nine thousand, I'm not sure what for thirteen, what we spent that one.
So.
Does need to build a grant for nine thousand two hundred.
So that, I mean, to me, again, that that grant was already, that was, we got the local hazard mitigation plan done.
Yeah.
We, we spent the, we gave the money to. Wyndham Regional Commission, we were supposed to get grant money back in.
Right.
I don't think that is relevant here at all anymore, so it doesn't have to be done every year. But I just don't know what this forty-five hundred was, I can't remember what it was for. Cuz I mean, we don't have any plan for, we're gonna do. A training and it's gonna take two thousand dollars to do, you know, a tabletop drill. We just, I don't think we have anything like that from Paul at this point. So, I don't know. If we. Remove it and say if we don't.
The what, you what forty-five hundred are you referring to?
In the formula, there's ten, uh, there.
Oh, that forty-five, the the thousand eighty plus forty-five, yeah.
Yeah, the ten eighty is, is ninety times twelve for the.
Yeah. Should be. Ninety twelve times is ten eighty.
Is there. Was there? And it can't be that expensive. Um. Maintenance on the generators, for example.
So that was in somewhere, but was that?
So I'm gonna take this hazard grant out.
Yeah.
Let's go on. Can we shoot him an email now?
We can, but it's rare that he has time to respond to the emails, I really think that phone calls are more effective. Um, I do have a little bit of information from him, but it's pertaining to the school stuff.
Okay.
Um.
Well, let's keep it yellow for the moment. Cuz we have no reason to pull it up or down, um, and unless we're completely satisfied, let's leave that yellow. Uh, lease agreements. That's the copier. So that. That is what it is. That's a small number. Streetlights and closes up. Okay, so that's streetlights. Counting, this is the accounting reserve.
Yep.
And so if we go, it's just since we're talking about reserve, let's just remind ourselves.
You can just probably look at what we spent, right?
Yeah, I go right to the reserve, I'm gonna go to the reserve one first. So, bridge. Resurfacing. Appraisal cemetery. Office record restoration, do you not have an accounting reserve fund? Hello, we did.
I know we set one up.
That's what we did, it's gotta be up here, bridge, cemetery. Grant, resurfacing, strange, Scott names. Reappraisal cemetery and bridge. Building, office equipment, record restoration. Doesn't look like we. That's issue.
I mean, can we just look at what was in the spreadsheet for it, cuz I'm pretty sure. We put five thousand in it each year.
Oh, here, so.
Accounting services reserve, it's listed as a reserve. And.
We put five thousand in the budget for last year.
And and probably the first five thousand was that first year that we did all those reserve articles.
We do.
So I think there's ten.
Alright, so. I need the reserve. Schedule for accounting, right? And we need to put it over here, whatever it is, I have to get that this. That says fiscal twenty-four, and it's not really twenty-four, it's gonna be fiscal. Twenty-six. Um, but we need one of these. For the accounting funds. So weird. Didn't look like it.
So what is that for, is that the money that we're using, setting aside for the audit?
Yes. Yeah, and so it should have something here, like when, you know, what what was the town meeting date where we said we're gonna have a reserve fund for that? You know, and I think it's just this schedule for whatever reason, it didn't that. Created, but there should be in the articles for last year. The last year or the year before. Maybe it was prior year, so. Nope, that's different, so last, this is, so it was when.
Alright, hold on, article five, twenty-four, this is from March twenty-four. Shall the town resend the reserve fund called the grant reserve?
Yeah, that that's, that's a different, that's for the big, that is, yeah, that was a big. Setup that had to do with the harvest. So. So. This is weird. So here, right, so you've got setup cemetery, this is eighteen six ninety-one, just to show you real quick. Go to the cemetery in eighteen six ninety-one, raise and appropriate. Right, so so this will track all of that. Reappraisal, building. This was the grant reserve that we had to change. It's a canopy. Surfacing, resurfacing. This is the au- authorized audits was article seven. And the audit reserve fund article eight, by raising inappropriate in five. So we need article eight. Just need to create one.
But here's called the audit reserve fund.
Correct. So what I need is a little box like this, copy. Right? Where we're gonna have the audit reserve fund show up. So this is what we're gonna call audit reserve fund. Is account, we're gonna go, what if? Eight thousand. So that was account sixty-three, ten. The town meeting date. March seven twenty-three. This was article number eight. Eight. I don't believe there was anything in it. We'll have to double check.
Ever started.
So then we said raise and appropriate five thousand. And then.
Why is there another article number in there?
Cause he's.
Article eight.
Oh.
It's Article eight from here.
Okay, but that row sixty-nine.
Yeah, we got a lot to do. So we put that in there, so that. Is Article eight. Then we didn't spend anything. Select word or. We spent zero. I'll go Patty there, I expect this, cause this, she'll, she'll be able to write into QuickBooks. So we spent zero, zero. And this would be a. These are all closed balances. So I guess what we would wanna do, that's the closed balance in fiscal twenty-four. So now we have to add the eight that we wanna put in for twenty-six. So I wanted to see how we.
Wasn't there already five thousand more in there from last year?
That's right here.
Right, it should be ten thousand, right, total of ten thousand dollars.
Right. So did we start with five thousand in it?
Yes. We, we, we put five thousand in, in twenty-three.
Yeah.
But in twenty-four.
Let's go look.
We put in another five, am I correct?
Yeah.
Let's see what we did. So in twenty-four, spent twenty-four. Budget twenty-four, we didn't, wasn't in the budget.
It was in the article.
It was in the article, okay. Then it was in the article, that makes sense. So that was. Article. Last year, taxes, expenditures, credit taxes. Where is it? Last year, Article eight?
No, not last year, the year before it was Article eight. That was year was first designated was Article eight. Then the next year, we put five thousand, we put five thousand dollars in it the next year.
This year. We put in five. And this year.
We put it in here, Karen, we put it in this line item, sitting right there. K, okay, right? Isn't that the budget?
This is the budget for twenty-five.
Okay.
So that you're saying the select board budgeted it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that with all of the reserve articles last year.
Okay, so.
Put them in the budget. We didn't write them a separate article.
So then, the way we wanna do it. Then we did total. Town meeting date twenty-three. The town meeting is all twenty-three. Alright, I can, this one, so then wanna do this. No, it's not an article. Alright, so then that has to be, come back here. Town meeting dates. So, this is gonna be. Not. That was twenty-four, seven twenty-three. This is March five twenty-four. Three, four. This is budget. Line item. Budget line item. And. And there, there, there. Three days. The open cash balance. We do. This. This. Forty, zero, that's for year twenty-four. We spent zero. That should be ten, and so then we, so now we're supposed to add another eight, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
That's what we're proposing.
That's, I mean, and that's, that's in the, I guess. Does the, do the other ones here are like what's in the budget?
They don't, it just goes through the end of twenty-four.
Okay, so let's not, let's not change this one now because it's not really. Relevant to what we're doing.
Right.
Moment.
Okay. Alright, so.
Okay.
And then I have to, to, this has to be confirmed to QuickBooks. This has not been confirmed to QuickBooks. I'm gonna make it red. And talk to Patty about that, and this will be confirmed to QuickBooks. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Five, that's eight. Okay. Sixteen. It's a big number. Oh, this was, this is Nemrick. That's the big difference there, the accounting software.
Yeah.
This. The new law enforcement number.
The Wyndham chair.
Yeah. We had a hundred and fifty-six hours. So it's a hundred and fifty-six hours times seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, but did it go up to seventy-five?
Looks like it. Sheriff's, this says Sheriff's Church sixty-five.
That's why I'm wondering if it was a typo.
Good to know. How do we know? Yeah, one, there's a typo somewhere.
Oh, I know, okay. So. Seventy-five dollars per hour for anything less than two thousand hours per annum. So, sure, seventy-five, we have to just change that is.
Thirty-five.
Yeah, seventy-five for, for less than two thousand hour.
That's right, two.
Okay, now.
Hours per. Anum. Okay, so that's, so the number didn't change, so that was that, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Water increases, that's postage, town meeting expense, sorry, the difficulties, that goes right. Um, bridges, that was the big number. So this is, we went back and forth.
So that's.
We had the one eighty-two out, and then we had the amount coming back in. Here.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And there's the eighty-two. So there's the bridge. So that can be green now. So. We have the bridge fund, which was fifty-nine, nine, nine, five, let's just double check real quick. Fifty-nine, nine, nine, five. Fifty-nine, nine, nine, five, it's the closing balance of fiscal twenty-four. We got. That's fine.
So did that five thousand dollars get moved in there?
So, what five thousand dollars?
That we budgeted last year for that reserve fund?
Um, let's see. Actually. Let's see, so.
And Karen, your screen share did stop, which you might have done intentionally, or you might not have.
I think not.
You know?
I mean, I don't know, it might not there at all.
We got to put more quarters in the machine.
Yeah. Yeah, what's going on? What's going on? We should have paid that bill. Yeah, it's. There you go.
There we go.
So bridge reserve fund, FEMA reimbursement, so. So it looks like it did not get in there, but this is, well, this is interesting, alright, so. This says it's, that's what's in QuickBooks. So then the question for Patty is. Patty needs to move it from whatever fund it's in, into this reserve fund. So it looks like that hasn't happened.
Okay, alright, that's good.
Um, so there's probably all of these. So that's huge. We need to move. Hold on, what amount is that? That five thousand is where, who's purchased, so that. Which reserve fund is thirty, oh, that was just a budget, okay, hold on. So what we're saying is, this five thousand. Which was. Budget twenty-five. Needs to move in.
You might wait and do that at the end of this fiscal year.
I'm, I'm betting that's what it is.
Okay, alright.
I'm betting that's what it is, but we can at least talk to her.
Um, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So anticipate, we'll, and then. The FY twenty-five. Budget. Amount needs to be. Reflected in. Bridge. Reserve fund. Schedule.
Right.
Okay.
Alright.
Right, let me get back over here, so we can see where we are, okay.
So we did decide we would.
And then, so it's, so, so the five and the fifteen would have to go in there. So the five, the fifteen ultimately is for twenty-six.
Right, the fifteen is just what we're asking the, the voters to do.
To look forward, yeah. So if we did that, let's just say, let's just look at it now, so we have.
I, I, I think it would, like.
Wait, where does that get us? So that gets us.
It, so this.
Sixty, we've got fifteen. And five, that gets us up to eighty in the reserve fund, ultimately, like, once you get through this.
Yeah.
Where we would.
Yeah, and I think we might want to, um. Yeah. I don't know for a long time, but it would be worthwhile to talk about. What we think the next bridge project actually is, um, because.
Yeah.
That, that would be helpful information for people to understand, and.
It would. Um, and, and we'll have that, we ought to have that certainly, before the information meeting, I've gotta just. Get ahold of. Our bridge, whether it's Wyndham or the state.
There's a, there's actually an online bridge engine.
Yeah, so it's just something to do, I'll have them walk me through it, I'm nothing.
Yeah.
So Casey to. Review, and I can go through that with my, okay. Alright. Sorry, sorry for the detour. Okay, so that's that. Those were big numbers, dispatching fees we just did.
The, um, can I just make a note that? Is that bridge thing really that much higher? Is that really three hundred?
Thirty-eight, forty.
Thirty-eight, forty percentage higher? I mean, it was pretty, it was five thousand last time, so that may be fine.
So five thousand, two. Five thousand two. One nine seven. Change percentage is three thousand eight hundred and forty.
Okay, alright, no.
But yeah, that is really looking number, but yeah, that's the math, just between budget to budget.
Gotcha, I just wanted to.
Nope, you're good. You're good.
Um, okay, so cemetery potential care reserve fund went down a little bit this year. They give big report, dispatching fees, looks like went up by six percent. Um, which we just covered, um, equipment and gear, we're giving an extra, extra five thousand. Uh, into that space, one thousand of it moving from the reserves, or from the social services agency and four thousand being an additional request.
And that was, sorry, that was the OSHA request.
That was the OSHA request. Um. Ambulance services can't do anything with that.
And it looks like we're still waiting for. Information.
So.
Did we not get that bill, is what that looks like?
Got a three-year contract on.
I.
Need the amount. So.
Rescue Inc., right?
And that.
Yeah, three-year contract with Rescue Inc.
With Rescue Inc., but not Deerfield Valley Rescue.
So Rescue Inc. is a one percent increase, so that's included in there. So twenty thousand paid quarterly, and then Rescue Inc. is ninety-five a month.
They come out here, Rescue Inc. And Bradmore. Again, they just go to the Thomas Hill area, cause remember, you can't get there from here.
Oh, yeah.
You have to go, yeah, so, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty minor amount. Okay, um.
So does this need to be yellow? Are we waiting for something, or?
I, I, I have this suspicion that there's either, like, some sort of. Contract sitting over in that filing cabinet, or maybe not, and it's just been a, every year we're asking for twenty thousand dollars, so. I, I, um.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna send something to, um. Emily right now, just to say, uh.
Does, does that cover a lot of people in Thomas Hill?
No, but it's only eighty bucks a month. And, you know, one of the things we have to think about with all these emergency services, it's really kind of a capacity issue, right? You don't want, you don't want people having to go for all the way around, and, you know, we don't know how much it's actually getting used, but. I think it's.
It would hurt attacking with like that.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so Emily, I'm sending you an email, um. To check, uh, to see if there's anything in Deerfield Valley. Rescue, uh, check their websites. Uh, there's somebody named Heidi, Heidi is the business contact, or at least she was years ago. And, um. Asked about a contract. For. Alphans. Matter of fact, I could do that, thank you.
Okay, oh, I just heard back from Bill Garrity. Where I said, does the comprehensive warranty also include powertrain and hydraulics? Absolutely does, full machine major component. Yeah, so. Do we want to?
It's still not quite all the question. I mean, it sounds like everything, but I guess. We asked a question, it still. Covers like electronics and sensors, and we're going to ask that question.
I'll ask him, no.
Yeah, if he's responding, why not, isn't him? It sounds like it probably does, but.
So we, uh, is, uh. Ready, uh. Or budget ready?
Is there a note eating on? That, words yellow for the ambulance, it says something about waiting for information. From Dennis. But I saw that way over there, right? The green notes.
Which line, uh, which line are we looking at?
Uh, seventy-four. Where the yellow block is.
Uh, what, what did you want to call this, computers?
Um, sensors, computers, electronics, wiring. Artists, artists is.
Yeah, sensors. Wearing harnesses. I asked him for, it'd be much easier if he just sent me the actual paperwork, but. Be much easier if you just sent me the actual paperwork, but. So thanks so much for in the middle of our budget meeting, and the question was asked if the comprehensive coverage also includes, also. Includes computer, sensors, wiring, harnesses.
Same one over there?
I don't know, I'm still, I'm still a little bit behind, I don't actually have her latest one up here on my screen.
I don't think I did either.
So.
So Karen, can you scroll that over?
Where am I going through that?
Where the yellow block is.
Yeah.
For contracted ambulance services, the green notes way to the right. I thought I said something over there about.
Paid quarterly. Dennis, Dennis will share the contact information.
Okay, so.
Was that Rescue Inc.?
No, he was actually thinking, supposed to share contact information about cold rain or something. Um. Last year, as he was saying, cold rain might be another option.
Oh, so I can take that out?
I, I would.
That's not, if it's the, if it's not relevant to now. Okay. Alright.
Okay.
So we think that's blue now?
Yep. I mean, we're, we'll ask, but I, I just have the sense that there's either, like, uh, an ancient contract, or. It's some sort of. Agreement that just sort of came about. We went through a bumpy time when we had. EMS crews and ambulances changing and dissolving and whatever, and at some point. We said Deerfield Valley Rescue. Basically absorbed some of the Whitingham ambulance service and started to provide service to us. So.
So yellow, yellow or not yellow?
I would put it as, as blue, and. With all of this stuff, I mean, any late breaking news, I'm sure.
Just go in, right? Yeah, landfill monitoring, I'm not sure why that's yellow.
Because I think we just don't know how much it actually is gonna be, we, we kind of cut it.
Because it's, we only have to do it once a year now?
A year, yeah, so that's.
But we weren't sure if it was gonna go up, but again, this is our best estimate.
Yep. Yep. County tax. Build annually.
I think Patty said we don't know that until. Like, really late.
Very end, and so this.
Increase the public prior year deficit.
Yeah. So let's look at what we did for prior, so. Yeah, it looks like. Spent fifteen, spent sixteen, I think we just said seventeen.
Yep.
We just, uh.
Call it blue.
Yeah. We just follow the trend line.
Oh, rent.
So, yeah.
Here, you say you had some information from Paul.
The information from Paul had to do with. What was gonna go into the town booklet this year, and that was the only thing that I got back from him.
Okay.
So, which is that they're, they're gonna put, produce their own report like they did in the past.
Okay, so. Again, just to look at what was spent.
This was the deal made last year.
Year, okay.
They said it would be better for the taxpayers for it to be in our budget, not in theirs, so.
Yeah, okay, so.
Haven't been told, we're given.
Okay, so that's, so that's blue. Then unemployment insurance. What's two twenty-six a quarter? I guess that's right. Not sure what's.
I, I think, I think that we might at some point have had some, some information come in about it, and I'm not sure if it didn't go down, but I, I don't. I don't have a piece of paper to validate that.
Okay. Right, so I'm gonna make this red, I just wanna see what the P L, so I just wanna talk to Patty about that and find out if we need that. Standard reappraisal, we'll have to do the same thing. Since we've got the reappraiser fund, and the news are the offsetting, were we gonna do anything with the Scott fund for the town? For the garage roof? Do we have to move money? What, what is the status of that?
So we are waiting to see if we get this E, E R funding.
Yeah.
Um, that would actually be a good one to follow up on with all the other things going on, like trying to get in touch with them with the bank, I haven't. I haven't explicitly asked Patty, but it did occur to me that it would be nice to know. To be a hundred percent or more confident that, you know, we didn't misinterpret that letter.
Well.
That would be a big.
Yeah.
Be a big scary thing if we misinterpreted it.
And who, who is, who is, um.
Uh, the state sent it to us, I forwarded it to everybody, um. I would, I would just see if Patty can follow up on it, I mean, at some point, it looked like it would just.
You're out funding, do we have a date there, twelve seventeen? Twenty-four, two months to get, okay, so ask Patty about it.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was. The federal government has to give it to the state, there was.
And then, right.
They were doing their usual, and then.
That's a big thing.
Do we know what the number is, or we don't?
I don't think we did at the time.
No, I think we could calculate the number, right? We can calculate the number.
Off of what we received?
Yes, because, uh, uh, the town share. Would be. All of those numbers together. Take that amount of money and say we'd only have to pay two point two percent. Of the total.
Alright, so see what we got. One, one, two. Adding up the one, one, three to four thousand and the one, seven, nine. Those numbers? All these?
Those were the amount spent or that amount received.
That's the amount received, so the amount.
The town share would only be two point two percent.
Of amount spent.
Of, of. Yeah.
Alright, let me find amount spent, so grants. So FEMA is down here. And. Grant award, minimum spend. Town expenditure was three ninety-three. So what do we say? Two point two. Eight thousand, so we would only spend eight thousand?
Right, which would mean we'd get back eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Equals. Matching kind. This. Minus this. I'll clean it up another time. But eighty-eight, seventy-four, so this is the E R. Reimbursement. Right?
Estimate.
Estimate.
Estimate, because this is where I start to say, like, I've done the math, you've done the math now, we've both done the mo- math.
Okay.
Money is not sitting in the account yet.
Estimate.
And that's all about this fiscal year anyway, you know, right? We, we should be getting that this fiscal year, and that's what we were hoping to use some of it to cover that garage roof.
Yes.
And then, if we don't have to borrow from the Scott fund, that would be nice.
Scott fund, okay?
Want another jacket?
No, I got my best. Okay, so that's the E R estimate, so let's go back here. Do we need the E R estimate to be? In this section at all?
No, because it's coming in this fiscal year. We're gonna spend it this fiscal year, and the only thing we would need is if we're not gonna get that, we would need to make sure that we somehow had. Funding for that garage roof.
Right.
Um, so I don't think we need to do anything with that.
Okay, um, do we need to add it to this prior year at all?
No, because that, that was, that was last year's book, this is this year's book.
Well, this. This is last year's book, but this is this year's, and so we update prior years as we find things, because next year we'll have to look back, so. Should that come in here anywhere? Should we have a?
Not until it's.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't do it because it's, it's money coming in. That is my understanding of how it's.
Alright, so I'm gonna do it as a note. And I'm gonna say pending. E R. Estimate.
Just a percentage.
Two point two percent.
No, we paid the whole thing.
Of the. FEMA. Spend. Question mark, T, the. Confirmed. So I'm just sort of sticking it there as a, like, what's going on here? Just, just so, just so we have like a set of notes, and maybe it goes there, maybe it goes someplace else, we'll see when, when the money actually comes in.
So what is that green line, though?
What is what green line? This, other funding?
No, what's the top thing? Is that last year's budget?
This is spent twenty-five.
Okay.
I spent twenty-five.
Okay. But, yeah, but it's only up to a certain date, so.
Right, it's only as of December fifth, but, but that's where presumably if we get it. It, it's a place to start. Cause I didn't, I just, I just didn't wanna lose sight of it.
Okay. Alright, so then, one question.
Question mark, and then I'm just gonna put, question, um, thing, pending. The large roof and E R.
Okay, um. There's no. Place, like, uh, one eleven. Zero, oh, oh, one eleven.
Whatever, I'm sorry.
Uh, oh, one eleven is the column next to the other funding increase. I mean, tha- that's at zero percent, but we now have sixteen, one hundred and sixty-three, eight hundred in there, because that's the grant. I don't know if we can do, I mean, it's gonna be a hundred percent, right, because it's from zero to that.
Uh, why isn't that calculated? Let's see. Right there, you can.
Yeah.
Probably because it's too man big, so that is if K, oh, if K eleven is zero, is zero.
Okay, yes.
So that, if something is zero, it's just because it becomes a non-number.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, but that's a, that's, you know, income that. We didn't, you know, that we're, that we're gonna use to offset stuff, and it would.
I mean, I can, instead of saying zero, I can hardwire a hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I don't.
What, what, what do you feel better with?
I don't know. I think the overall, the overall piece says two hundred and thirty, three hundred and twenty-three percent increase for. For income against.
From fifty to that, and then let me just check.
One sixty-three, eight, that's for the, the bridge.
Yes.
The bridge structures.
Yeah, so that's explained in that box.
Four, five, hundred change.
Yeah.
It's three twenty-three oh eight, so the math, that, that.
When we print it, though, Randy, that will be there, but the, but the three hundred and twenty-three percent will be there, so that'll raise.
What I can do here, we can do other funding, and for purposes of it printing. Right? Is. Catch. School structures grant, right? Want me to say that?
We could, we'll just have to update it every year, there's other stuff going in there.
But for now, we can.
Yeah, last year, we just, we just left it on the. Other funding, we didn't put any reason why there was. Four hundred and fourteen thousand in that.
We could better every year. Okay, so anyway, so other funding, I just put hat school structures, structures grant, so we'll see. Then this. This is proposed twenty-six, yes.
Alright, so back down to the, all the way to the bottom, we're still, we've changed a little bit there, five point ten percent. Based on changes we've made, do we have, we've been at this, it's now seven forty. Do we?
Do we have any yellows in the, um. Highway?
We can look at that quickly, I wanna, I wanna just recognize, it feels like there's still a few holes here, so I don't think we're gonna get to a finished, finished state, but.
We, we, I'm sorry, a few holes where, and then select?
Yeah, I mean, we, we still don't have the actual financing, for example, of the equip.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of stuff, so it's not. But, um, is there any yellows on the highway that we wanna take?
Let's see what we've got here, so. Oh, so this reimburse column. This is from G M P, so we got the hundred, Patty has not yet billed for the additional part that we're on to chase down. I think it's eighty, right? I think it was eighty. The G M P billing. Which. We just gotta make sure we don't get in that little cluster thing again. Yeah, make sure it don't happen again, cause it's too much. Yeah. But anyway, that's what this yellow is, so I don't think it needs to be yellow, cause for us, yellow means something else, so I'm going to. Yeah, G M P. Invoice pending, so, ah, reimbursed. It was all in, was one forty-four, and we've received the hundred, and we still are the pending invoice for forty-four thousand. So that's for Patty to.
Okay.
No, it was one eighty-eight, what, it was one eighty.
It was, I thought it was one eighty.
It was one eighty-one, be- because we still need, we've got the tractor time, and we've got the loader, and we've got stone. That big piece was gravel. So, that's what we're waiting on for that, so as far as.
Is there anything in the proposed?
Yeah, so this, yeah, let me get rid of this now, let me get rid of that. So this is. It's, okay. So looking for yellows, communications phone, not sure if, don't know why that's.
Word, that's good. Was the question at one point. If we could. Sort of look for negotiate. With D V fiber, was that, wasn't there a talk about that? Somebody mentioned something about that, if we could.
Need a cell phone?
Get, oh, that's a cell phone, okay.
That's, this is cell phone. And I think we were.
Yeah, we see. I think it says, uh, D V fiber one twenty per month under. Uh, and we were under budgeted in prior, in prior year, so. Think that's probably.
Yeah. Yes, trash collection, not sure why it's yellow. This could be, plus green update disposal, not sure why that's yellow. Yes. Add salt shit, I don't know what that is. Think that. Think I wanna delete this, I don't know what that means.
What's it say?
Have to add seventy-three ninety, salt shed construction fifty-eight forty-six, but I'll, I'll check with Patty on that, cause I'm not sure. If we spent something.
I think that was from like.
A hundred years ago, right?
Or a few years ago, yeah.
Like that. Um, so here, this is what I'll do, I will. Cross it out.
Don't you know, I skip. Hang on, it keeps looking at that all.
We still, I can't, so we'll cross that out, so, so I just struck it, and when I talked to Patty. She'll say, yeah, I don't know what that is, or let's get rid of it, that's nothing. Alright, so. Stop me if I'm. Want a closer look, add hydro seeding. What the hell that is? Seven, four, five, three.
Hydro seeding? Oh, is that grass seed?
Yeah. Not sure what that means, uh, that's Patty, do, do you guys recall? Cause that's a count, seven, four, five, three, seven, four, five, four, there is no seven, four, five, three.
And is the forty dollars, forty dollars or something?
Something, I don't know what that means, right, I'm gonna leave that yellow and find out.
Okay.
Cause unless we've got some, um, can you try, have that yellow file there? Let's see if it's in the.
Oh, that's, no, that's current now, you're looking for the.
Yeah, I just wanna check the chart of accounts to see what seven, four, five, three is while we're. Have to add seventy-three ninety.
Anything there looking particularly yellow, but.
Uh no, it's a yellow folder. Goes back.
What are you talking about?
You know, it's when we do the uh select board orders. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I was. That's a little very well. Thank you.
Go.
That's why I'm budget.
Well, so what do we look for? We're looking for. Seventy four. Really good.
Seems like there was talk about adding that account.
And creating a new one, yeah.
Separate that out. Is it somewhere? It comes out of somewhere else now.
Yeah, because there's no seventy. Seventy four fifty. Yeah, okay, that looks like that's what that is. Okay. Okay.
Is that supposed to have a thumb drive in here?
It was there.
It was there last time. So I don't really know what that thumb drive is. And. I'm gonna say add. New. Number forty three and have to add. I'm gonna say new. Number seventy three ninety. Yeah, okay.
Alright, I'm gonna suggest we kinda.
Cause yeah, I'm not seeing as I'm swinging through here. Um I am not sure why that is yellow. There's trucks and I'm I'm just not sure how this truck account is used different from the truck payment account, which is seventy six ninety six. When we make payments. So that's kind of a Patty question. Sure for. That is. That there.
Is that like repairs or something?
Oops. So I'm sorry, which?
Uh the trucks. Is that? Here.
Um I I'm gonna have to ask Patty because I don't know what that is.
What's the header for that group?
There's a whole lot. Well, there's a whole lot of zeros. I mean, it's not like it. I don't know if it's just like an account that doesn't get used a lot.
Equipment operating costs. I don't.
I don't know what it. Send me. I don't know what that is, but there was a number in it once upon a time. So that it looks like it comes in and there's a P and L question. Difference on P and L asset on the balance sheet. So it was talking about loans. So I'm gonna have to figure out. What that correct number should be. I'm gonna make it yellow again, just so I make it go away with Patty. I'm gonna talk to Patty about that. Okay. All this other stuff. This level finance, diesel fuel. It's down. That's kind of it. Other funding.
Alrighty.
So that's unless something is still jumping out at you guys. That's.
Now, there's the wish list of like, can't we just make that stuff go go down? But. Then there's the reality of we don't know what our repairs and maintenance is gonna be. We still have some equipment that's older and. And we've got uh. A grader to try to. Ease through an extra year that we. Decided on. So, okay, let's go into um. Easement for Hatch Road real quick. And then we'll switch into new business and.
Oh, okay. So so this is just a straight update. I was talking to Bob Fisher this morning and this goes back down to to Hatch School. Um he is gonna send me back an email. He's going to copy. Um Diana Todd and uh because she's the one that's gonna, her family will be providing the easement. He asked if we had the engineered information and I said we did not get any an engineering. Um. Assessment done of the culvert. Um one of the guys which we talked about when bids opened, uh Basin Brothers did not submit a bid because. We didn't have an engineer say this is exactly what you need. This many pieces. It's gonna look like this on the slope. It's gonna stick out here into the. You know, this much of it's in the right of way. This much of it is somewhere else. We didn't do that. I guess we've never done that because of the inherent cost of doing such a thing.
There's isn't there like a state standard anyway, like a state mandated?
We we had all the drawings, you know, from. What it's supposed to look like from V trans. But that is just a drawing of the. Box culvert. It's not how it's actually gonna fit in the space. So to get the easement, you have to know how it's gonna fit in the space. And he says this is a permanent easement or temporary easement. So this would be permanent easement because it's a big old sixty foot.
Yeah.
Concrete thing. He says, okay, so. What he wants me to do and he's gonna, I'm sort of verbalizing this to you. He's gonna send me an email. Uh and copy Diana Todd so that she's in the loop with everything that we're doing because their family is taking that one piece of property. It's on both sides of the road and they're gonna make it two pieces of property. So I want her to know kind of what we're doing. But what he suggested is that I go back to the state to Scott Jensen. To say, how how are we gonna do this? Because we can't say, well, the front end of the culvert. Starts, you know. How many feet from? From what? Right? So. I have to talk to him to find out. This could end up being complicated. Um he Bob didn't sound too distressed about it. Um. But it's just it's just another couple of steps for me. I I don't know if there's any, the only budget implication is if we had to scramble and get an engineer's report. I don't know what that would be, but I'll find out what Scott says. Um but I guess the the lesson learned is when we're doing anything that is that big. We pretty much should get. Should get the engineers um. To take a look at it. It protects us. It protects the landowner. Um it allows absolutely everybody to bid on it and what basin called me and had a bunch of conversations and we didn't submit a bid. Because it's too hard for his bid to be compared to somebody else's bid because they're looking at it one way. He's gonna look at it because if there's an engineer thing, there is no question. You do it like this.
And that's where the guts were all over the place.
Yes. Yes.
Wow.
Yes. So but that's just, I think, just enough to learn. And I asked about, you know, like Pike Road. And that was just, it was much smaller. So it wasn't. And that's it was just wasn't a thing. So um I will report back once I've. You know, heard back from.
Okay.
Bob and Scott.
Alright, we're gonna move into new business. We gotta do one of these things.
So can I now? I can now. We don't have to. I don't have to share my screen anymore.
Okay, alright. So Gina is here who has been trying to start tracking. What do we have? What do we not have? Where are we with this? And you were gonna try to get in touch with the pitcher again.
I did today. Excellent. Yes, and. For some reason, they were pretty relaxed today and Bill was like, as long as you get the file into us, we'll do our best to get it to you. By the twenty first because this twenty second is a Saturday. So.
Okay.
Alright, and I was like, so we're good. I I said probably the beginning of February.
Yeah.
And he's like, okay.
Alright.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I was trying to turn myself up. That printing in February?
Yes, beginning of February. We are the last thing that I'm aware of is that the auditors are gonna meet on the thirtieth. And she said she thought they could have their report done on the thirty first.
Of January.
Auditors.
January, January thirty one.
We have to have many of our other pieces um have to be done prior to that. Um and we're not gonna get. Anything from the school. So we're gonna put in a little note that it will be, I know, an appendix and they will do their own confirm. Of their stuff. Um. Just got something from. Green update today from the state. But so Emily can put that into. The folder. Stephanie Pike. Is said that would be fine as opposed to her doing something. You know, custom with. So I sent her some photos from last year, but if we've got a nice one pager from green uh green up day Vermont, then that will suffice. For that. Um. What else did we have on this? Um. We're gonna get. A hundred and fifty copies with viral binding. Twenty five copies without it because this makes it too thick to put it in. A standard envelope and it costs more postage for her to mail them. If people want them mailed, she's required to mail them. So um but that'll that'll save us some.
Sorry, so one fifty spiral. How many twenty five? No, no binding.
No binding, station whatever.
Okay.
Um. I think. We're gonna um. We're gonna split out. We're gonna have town reports, department reports. Then we're gonna have something called. Halifax nonprofits, which is where we're gonna put the community club and the fire company. Because they're not really. Departments. And then the regional reports. Um. Like I said, school report. So you just have to give us their warning and the minutes. From their meeting in twenty twenty four. And. We are scheduled. To meet. Multiple times before. They're scheduled to meet. On the fifteenth. Seven at seven Gina and I will be here. Um Emily may come.
Yeah, I just I think I filled it all in. So.
Fifteenth. Fifteenth at seven PM. Seven PM. Yep, that's and that doesn't. That's not a meeting of the select board. That is.
Alright, that's you guys.
That is Gina and I and and anybody who feels they're needed to produce the report and if we need a form of the select board, then we have a problem because it's not gonna be worn down.
So what is your plan for that? Cause I'm happy to come, you know, when I'm can be helpful and we'll Adobe stuff. I'm happy to.
Yeah, so.
Cause all of all of that stuff that we've been going, I'm gonna have to Adobe. And then we put it all together. I think is what I did last time compiled everything into a giant. PDF file.
Yeah.
Renumbered all the pages. So that's where we don't need to be.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'm I'm coming at the end.
I'd like to go through that and make sure the page numbers are correct and everything. Yeah, so so on the twenty third. Gina. And I and either Emily or the select or the secretary laptop are gonna be here. The twenty third of January, we're gonna do a dry run and get something pulled together with, you know, like. I think we probably have most of the regional reports. But we'll try to do is get a sense of like how much effort is that piece? Because we are not expected. That would be the first day we could post the town meeting warning. Maybe we will have it done by then. Maybe we won't have it completed by then. Um.
Sounds like if I come, that might be a useful day for me.
Day to come, but then I I pretty well figuring that we're not gonna have the auditors report until the thirty first.
Right.
So probably.
But that's what that's what happened last time. Then we got the auditor's report.
Yeah.
And then I merged it into what we already had. So there's some paper shuffling that. In Adobe, um you know, we can.
Yeah.
We can do. So we can get it. Working order and then what we do is. You know, we we can create blank pages. Holds for audit report, right? Or hold for whatever.
Right, but I think we're gonna have, I don't think down that twenty third, we're necessarily gonna be getting much of it together. I think most of the work.
Okay.
We're like, we're probably gonna. Use that as a trial run and there's probably gonna be a meeting the last week of January. Just well.
Yeah, I'm I'm. Available the whole week.
Okay, thank you.
I think I'm home alone that whole week. So.
Uh huh.
They're kicking around.
Oh, movie about.
Looking. I know, it didn't turn out well at all.
Okay, um.
So just you and and Edie's gotta come. Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay. I am gonna need you though. You and I write the road commissioner report. Oh, great. I talked to Mike. I'm gonna get stuff started.
Yeah. So, yeah, so that's.
So that 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 you and I have to spend some quality time. Yeah, you and I are gonna spend some time on that.
That said, a few of the a few of the department reports are in. I have not touched doing, starting the select board report, which I will do and then run it past you. Um. There are other pieces of this that we are that we, meaning I am on the line for with with. Karen being on the line for all this budget stuff, right?
Yeah, put me on the line for budget and put Rhonda and I on the line for road commissioner. I've already gotten. Some input today from Mike on that.
Okay.
Um and then we're gonna.
And. Yeah. So I think. We're. In a good place. But I wanted to give everybody an update and wanted to make sure that if anybody had any concerns or questions, we. Budget that time in at this point. And then anything else Gina that you think of for that?
I think that was that was it.
Okay, Emily, any comments on the town report so far? Emily, uh we still wanted everything to go to the Halifax secretary account. So Emily has been filing it into a shared Google Drive that Gina has access to. But I didn't. I didn't wanna give Gina's email out because you know how it is, one.
Oh, yeah.
Season to the next, somebody will be there.
Yep.
Um and they'll get it to the wrong place. Um.
Edie, could I ask a question?
And Stephen.
I I just wanna confirm that the conservation commission report was. Received, I believe Emily has it. So um I just wanna make sure there are no issues with it. Thank you.
Okay, Emily, do you have any comments on that? Um. I will sign into drive right now.
Okay, well, just wanna make.
So we've got an inventory sheet that we are using to track who's who's. Who's on the naughty list and who's not yet on the nice list. And I'm gonna guess that. There are. There are a few. There are a few groups that it really. Is they just get it in and it's easy and we don't have to think about it. Um but.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Stephen.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay.
It looks like it's on the.
We said, thank you.
Oh, thank you. You're welcome.
I'm looking at it's on the inventory and then let me look in the file itself.
Wow. We will have had.
Conservation Commission FY twenty four town report in PDF and word. There, thank you, Stephen.
Last year had forty seven.
Oh.
Fifty two. This is we will have. We don't have any. If you don't put anything else on the calendar between now and March fourth. We will have had fifty two meetings.
See, at the beginning of the year, did I say we maybe needed to meet monthly or weekly?
I will not know.
But it's such a hard thing to get these meetings scheduled, right? Anyway.
Point. Well, most of them, I mean, a lot of them are budget. So we anyway, we had twenty five regular meetings and then twenty five special.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
And there's a lot of um ones pertaining to um.
Personnel.
Personnel issues, yeah. Employment stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Let's talk about the. Informational meeting. Um. That we also hold in front of town meeting.
And okay, that I'm gonna have to add and I think for. Right?
So.
Budget as a. Select board meeting on this just sort of list of meetings. Should that be one of them informational meeting?
The informational meeting is the.
First one. Oh, yes, we did February twenty seventh. We did that last time.
Okay.
So.
Um.
Think that goes here. After the eighteen.
So one of the questions about the informational meeting that was answered at a training session that I went to. Is that we absolutely can promote that more so than the minimum required postings, but we have to have. Um. We do have to have an informational meeting if we have anything on the warning. That is not. Um. That we do from the floor. So. Um. A note about, no, that's that's not for that. Um. Informational. Hearings are allowed. But are not. Oh, if you were doing all Australian ballot, never mind. You must, we must video record that. Tech informational meeting.
Hmm.
And that recording has to be posted within twenty four hours. Until the point that the town meeting is certified. And supposedly we have to designate where we're gonna post that at a meeting. So I'm gonna say we're gonna post it on our YouTube channel. But. Um. Our informational hearing has historically been. In the multipurpose room.
Yep.
Uh and we don't have an owl there. Right, so. We have to do it hybrid, I believe, so. Um.
Hmm.
At least I'm my notes are pretty bad here. So information hearing on any public questions. And it's. Permissible to have candidates introduce themselves at an informational hearing. If they try to do it on the floor, it has to be at the will of voters because there's already voting going on. If they try to do it on the floor, it has to be at the will of voters, because there's already voting going on. We could just do a candidate forum if we didn't have anything that had to be dealt with as an informational hearing, but I think. We're gonna have some stuff like. This article that Patty just gave me.
The what article was that?
Which is one that says we are going to. Uh need to. Recertify. That the Halifax community.